Meeting of the twenty-third Senate Standing Committee on Executive Appointments and Government Investigations will now come to order. I would like to recognize Mr. Devin Macarons, the Legislative Assistant assigned to this committee, to please call the roll.
Senator Selena Arbauta.
Present.
Senator Karina Elmagofna.
I get.
Senator Paul A. Manglonya. Senator Donald M. Manglonya.
Present.
Madam Chair, three members are present, one member is absent.
This is Masi Senor Macarons. With one member, with three members present, we have established the necessary quorum to conduct today's hearing. For the record, Senator Paul is absent and excused for today. Buenos dias para todos, and welcome to your Senate chamber. Today is January twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four, and the time is exactly ten thirteen a.m. Before we proceed with introductions of other professional staff, I'd like to ask for everyone's cooperation to please silence all your electronic devices at this time. The committee appreciates minimal distractions during the hearing. Additionally, we are live on Facebook and YouTube and local channel twenty-three. If for any reason we need to take a break or recess, Facebook will continue to stream live without the audio, just to let you guys know. I want to formally introduce the members of this committee. Let the record reflect that the following members are present for today's hearing. Chairman of the Senate Standing Committee on Fiscal Affairs, Senator Donald M. Manglonya. Chairwoman of Resources Economic Development and Programs, and also the Gaming Committee for the Senate, Senator Karina Elmagofna. And as I mentioned earlier, also a member is Senator Paul A. Manglonya, who chairs the Senate Standing Committee on Public Utilities, Transportation and Communication, as well as the Committee on Federal and Foreign Affairs. I am Selena Babauta, and I chair this committee for the Senate. At this time, I would also like to recognize and introduce the professional Legislative Bureau staff assisting the committee today. To my left, beneath this dais is our counsel, Mr. Joe Bermudas, Legislative Assistant assigned to the committee, Mr. Devin Macarons. Our Sergeant-at-Arms present today are Sergeant-at-Arms Ben Terlahi and Sergeant-at-Arms Brendan Manglonya. Also, our IT Assistant, Mr. Gilbert Camacho. At this time, we will move on to the next item of the agenda, number two, adoption of the agenda. Can I get a motion to please adopt today's agenda?
I move to adopt today's agenda.
Seconded.
Motion has been made, and it has been seconded. Are there any objections or concerns on the agenda for today? There being no objections raised or concerns raised, the agenda for today's hearing is hereby duly adopted. We will move on to item number three. I would now like to invite the Special Assistant for Administration to Governor Arnoldai Palacios, Mr. Oscar Babauta, and the nominee to please come and join us in the chamber. Mr. Babauta's role here is to formally introduce the nominee to the committee. And this is the legislature exercising its authority under the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth to vet nominees from the administration or the executive branch. Mr. Babauta, you may proceed when you are ready.
Thank you. Then, she just must see Chairwoman Babauta. Good morning. Half a day then, Tiro, Chairwoman Babauta, and your honorable esteemed members of this august committee of the Senate, the Committee on Executive Appointments and Governmental Investigations. I also wish to greet the nominees' families who are currently in the gallery, both inside and outside, and her friends, and welcome them the same, and thank them for their support of being here of the nominee. For the record, my name is Oscar Babauta, Special Assistant for the Administration under the Office of the Governor. On behalf of the Honorable Governor Arnoldai Palacios and that of Lieutenant Governor David M. Apeteng, I thank you for the opportunity to appear before you, all of you today. I'm here to introduce officially to the committee our administration's nominee, the governor's and the lieutenant governor's nominee for the position of Associate Judge of our Superior Court with the judiciary branch of government. The most likable person around the legislative hall before our former counsel of the House, Ms. Deputy Attorney General of the Commonwealth, Ms. Lillian A. Tenorio. Ms. Tenorio has an impressive resume that highlights her extensive experience with over thirty-five years of serving on the Commonwealth, government, and its people, starting as a local clerk with the Office of the Honorable Judge A. Manglonya, Associate Justice of the Supreme Court. As she has progressed forward to become the Deputy Attorney General currently, Ms. Tenorio's outstanding qualifications and vast experience make her a exemplary candidate for the role of Associate Judge of our Superior Court. Thus, her Juris degree earned from the University of New Mexico is a testament for unwavering dedication and hard work. Ms. Tenorio's exceptional skills and expertise will make a significant contribution to the court's success, and we are honored to recommend her to this prestigious position. Governor Palacios and Lieutenant Governor Apeteng place their complete trust and confidence on Ms. Lillian A. Tenorio for the Associate Judges of the Superior Court of the Commonwealth and Northern Marianas. I know personally and I stand firm that she stands ready to answer your questions and present her plans for the future for our judiciary. Her extensive professional experience, credentials, and unwavering dedication to continue to serve in the Commonwealth and Northern Marianas have elevated her to a high quality as a strong candidate. We respectfully request a favorable consideration and prima pool of our nominee. Thank you, she just must see, Angela Lisa, Madam Chair, and members of this esteemed august body committee, EAGI. She just must see, and I guess I'll see you on February sixth.
This is Masi Senor Babauta. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, I now open the floor for public comments.
Half a day and good morning, Madam Chair and members of your esteemed committee. My name is Jose Simovness. I'm appearing as a ninety percent private citizen and ten percent representing my agency. And I will disclose why later. I appear before you and your committee to express my full support for Ms. Tenorio's appointment as a judge to the CNMI Superior Court. I firmly believe she possesses the qualities and experience necessary to serve as a jurist in this esteemed position. I am confident that Governor Arnold Palacios and Lieutenant Governor David Apeteng are committed to selecting individuals of the highest competence for crucial roles, especially as judges, and that the choice of nominating Ms. Lillian Tenorio was based on her impressive qualifications and track record as both an attorney and a longtime public servant, continues to serve the Commonwealth as the Deputy Attorney General. Ms. Tenorio's legal expertise, extensive experience in the field, and unwavering commitment to upholding the principles of justice make her an ideal candidate. I have no doubt that her dedication to public service and her understanding of the legal system will contribute to the fair and effective administration of justice in the CNMI. On more of my personal side, why I'm here as a ninety percent. Lillian is my niece. Her mother, the late Inez Esada is my sister. Lillian is a daughter, sister, auntie, mother, and grandmother whom I have observed for over ten years. She is kind, fair, thoughtful, respectful, and a natural leader amongst those around here. She is respected by her peers and everyone in the family. Madam Chair and members of the, of your committee, EAGI, I ask for your endorsement of Ms. Tenorio to the whole Senate body and confirming her to be the judge, to be a judge at our Superior Court. I wholeheartedly endorse her nomination and urge you to support her appointment to this vital position. Thank you, Elizabeth, she just must see, Madame Ang Salamat, for your time and consideration. She just must see, Tal.
This is Masi Senor Machness. The floor is still open for public comments.
Good morning, Tiro, Madam Chair, and members of this distinguished committee. I've known in short stint working with Lillian, being a member of the third Constitutional Convention. I know she's quite capable of doing her job. Her career and experience speaks for itself. I therefore urge this committee to please approve her nomination to be a jurist. Thank you, Tiro.
This is Masi. Would you please state your name and the entity you represent for the record?
My name is Felix Noges, Madam Chair. On behalf of the Carolinian community and Carolinian affairs, I'm here to acknowledge the overwhelming support from the Carolinian community in support of her nomination. Thank you.
This is Masi Senor Noges. The floor is still open.
Buenos dias, Tiro, Madam Chair, and esteemed members of this committee. My name is Donna Flores, and I am here in my personal capacity to support Ms. Lillian Ada Tenorio. I've known Lillian for about twenty-four years now, and she's one of a small circle of people of influence I have the utmost respect for and depend on for, for direction and reflection. You know, whenever we'd have conversations about issues here in the Commonwealth, she would always ask, "What does the law say?" or "What does the Constitution say, Donna?" So I'd always have to make sure I did my research and I built my defense before posing any sort of question to her. You know, and until this day, I still carry a copy of the CNMI Constitution and Covenant because you just never know, right? But that's our relationship. It's straight up. It's no nonsense, and it's not boring at all. Maybe those of you with lawyer friends are able to relate. So when Lillian shared the news of her nomination to the Superior Court, I started thinking about the traits of a good judge: independence, courage, integrity, sound knowledge of the law. You know, and then I thought, well, what makes Lillian so unique? And it's temperament, it's fairness, it's devotion and care for public good, particularly here in the CNMI. But one more quality stood out, and that was empathy. You know, we really need to humanize our justice system here in the CNMI. Judge Mujinga, let's say, she's a judge of the Court of Castigation, the president of the Association of Women Magistrates in the Democratic Republic of the Congo. She said, "Women's leadership in justice can enhance public trust and confidence, empower the less privileged, and make the court environment accessible to the marginalized." A high number of women in the judiciary can help humanize justice. And this is especially true in cases which involve the rights of women at the workplace, marriage and divorce, rape and domestic violence cases, even disability discrimination. I also know there's a need for additional or improved rehabilitative services and programs for offenders here in the CNMI. And further, she said, "Women bring empathy to the bench. A judge hears legal and factual arguments and is charged with selecting the better of the arguments. Being empathetic enables judges to understand and consider all the variables that should be analyzed, including the positions, feelings, and experiences of the parties." You know, of course, empathy doesn't tell a judge how to decide a case, but it is a procedural manner and means by which judges should hear a case, and Lillian Tenorio possesses this trait. We also need to humanize the court for a better community connection. You know, just a couple of things I found that really relate here in the CNMI, and that's, you know, addressing barriers to appearing in court. You know, we need to find out why people can't, you know, just, just get there. What are their reasons? You know, whether it's transportation or childcare or, or just whatever, whatever the barrier is. You know, I know Lillian is a strong advocate for these things, and she will find ways to help, you know, and commit to common sense processes. You know, we have to rethink our court system and how, how to navigate, you know, whatever processes are currently in place. And, you know, just, just make it simpler for those who just may be there for a one-time visit or, you know, issue, and, you know, and oftentimes failure to navigate a certain system. If it doesn't make sense, people don't come, and, you know, just stuff like that. And, you know, training the staff to distinguish between legal information and legal advice. Oftentimes, we find ourselves reluctant to share, right, or hesitant to answer questions that, that may be, you know, that may be resolved just at that level, not having to wait, you know, for, to go to a higher level and taking up a lot of time. And using plain language, you know, really, you know, we have to, we have to just help, you know, again, with accessibility and understanding processes, especially in our, in our judicial system. Just something that, you know, everybody can understand and, you know, relate to. And, you know, just other things, you know, that I'm sure she'll be able to, to contribute to, you know, like making the online processes a little easier, navigating, and just all those great things. You know, and this all goes back to why I support Lillian Ada Tenorio as CNMI Superior Court Judge, and that's because of her devotion and her care for public good. Like attorney Viola Alapuzu wrote yesterday in her letter of support, and I really appreciate her for stating this, "Lillian's personal and professional experiences will add to the quality and diversity of the CNMI jurists." And the only disadvantage that I see on this, and this is just in my own selfish way, Lillian, is that I'm gonna have to remove her from my list of three references, you know, in my resume. But, but that's okay, you know, so I'm willing to sacrifice, you know, and again, it's for the common good, right? It's, and, and I know that Lillian, I know that being a judge will give her the opportunity to change people's lives here for the better, for all of us. So with this, I humbly request, you know, your, your support and, you know, your vote to please confirm Lillian Ada Tenorio as, you know, a Superior Court Judge. Thank you.
This is Masi Senora Flores. The floor is still open for public comments.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, for this opportunity. My sisters back there were pointing to me and saying, "You go and represent the ADA side." No, I'm representing from a personal opinion. My name is Martin Ada, first of all. She's my first cousin, but knowing her and her vast experience in the law enforcement and the judicial system, I mean, the, yeah, the law enforcement, the legal system. I mean, the, yeah, the law enforcement, the legal system, there's, all, all the, the basic points of qualification for her nomination has been set. And I ask this august body to please confirm her nomination for this position. We support her. I know the community supports her. I doubt anybody back here or out here are going to oppose her nomination. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, for this.
Sidus Massey, Senor Adé. The floor is still open. You may begin when you're ready.
Good morning, Chair and Members. My name is Michael White. I've been practicing law in the Commonwealth for fifty-four years. In my mind, there are five traits that every good judge must possess: intelligence, commitment to the rule of law, common sense, an open mind, and integrity and character. I've known Lillian for many, many years. I've had the opportunity to observe her in professional as well as personal settings. She checks all of the boxes. I believe she'd be an outstanding judge, and I strongly recommend her confirmation by this committee and by the Senate. Thank you.
Sidus Massey, Senor White. The floor is still open for public comments.
Good morning, Honorable Senators. My name is Tina Sablon, and I'm here in full support of Lillian Tenorio's nomination to serve as Associate Judge for our Superior Court. Over the years, I've had the opportunity, in various roles that I've held, to observe many court proceedings and the styles and temperaments of different jurists. I've also had the opportunity to work directly with Lillian in her role primarily as Deputy Attorney General, providing legal advice to the Governor's Office, as well as in her role representing the Office of the Attorney General in reviewing and commenting on legislation. She has always been fair, constructive in her criticism, well-versed in the law, and ethical to her core. She's also very funny, and I personally think that a sense of humor is an essential attribute in any occupation, and perhaps especially so in the practice of law. I can say without reservation and full confidence that Ms. Tenorio will bring to the judiciary her characteristic wit, her integrity and intelligence, and her faithful commitment to the law and public service. She will be an excellent addition to the bench, and I urge for her confirmation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sablon. The floor is still open for public comments. We always tend to give a little extra time for those who, to muster up the courage. I know what it's like to be out there. So now's the time to be courageous and come up and provide your public comments. If there are no further public comments, we will close that portion. No takers? I will now close the public comment portion of this session. Let the record reflect that the committee also received written letters of support for Ms. Tenorio's nomination from the following individuals: Ms. Annie Tenorio Sablon, President of Jotun Enterprises Incorporated; Attorney Charity Hudson, in her individual capacity; Attorney Michael Ernest, in his personal capacity; Attorney Lucia Blanco Maritita, from Tinian; Mr. Edward Manabusen, Commonwealth Attorney General; Mr. Arsene Borja, from the Second Senatorial District, the Municipality of Tinian and Agüigan; Mayor Edwin Pardón, Municipality of Tinian and Agüigan; and Attorney Viola Alapuzo, in her individual capacity. The committee also received the results of the Cinemai Bar Association's evaluation pursuant to their resolution. Of the hundred sixty-three active attorneys in the NMI Bar Association, there are ninety-two with active status in the Commonwealth. On a scale of one to five, with one being the lowest rating and five being the highest, the results of their survey indicate that Ms. Tenorio received an average rating of four point one five. She was rated in four categories, namely legal ability, integrity and impartiality, communication skills, and professional and temperament. She scored highest in the integrity and impartiality category. Additionally, the committee received no letters in opposition of Ms. Tenorio's nomination. We will now move on to number five of the agenda, new business. And before we hear from the nominee herself, we are here in session today to fulfill a solemn responsibility pursuant to the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth in pursuit of a fair and impartial justice system. Before this committee comes Deputy Attorney General Ms. Lillian Ada Tenorio, who was nominated by Governor Arnold I. Palacios on November twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three, to serve as the twentieth Associate Judge of the NMI Superior Court and the fourth female appointed to such an esteemed office. This is a position of immense trust and public importance, demanding the highest standards of legal acumen, integrity, and commitment to the rule of law. Ms. Tenorio, I appreciate your willingness to answer our questions and share your vision for this important role. We will approach this hearing with an open mind and a commitment to fair and thorough examination of your qualifications and suitability for the position you are nominated to. This committee acknowledges that there may be diverse perspectives on your nomination, and we will consider carefully all viewpoints presented. To the family members of the nominee and members of the public who are witnessing this process and those watching this session at home, I extend a warm half-a-day, dan benvenido para todos samzo, and welcome to your Senate chambers. Throughout this hearing, let us remember that the gravity of the task this committee is charged with. We are seeking not only an experienced and qualified judge, but also someone who embodies values of fairness, impartiality, and a commitment to justice. I now invite Ms. Tenorio to please rise and raise your right hand, while Mr. Mark Karanas will administer the oath to you.
Lillian Ada Tenorio, you do solemnly swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you shall give in the matter at hand shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Thank you.
You may be seated. Thank you. With that, I give the floor to the nominee to address the committee if she chooses to do so. And then we will begin the question portion.
I so choose. I want to thank the people who have come here, friends, family, and, and members of the bar to show their support for my nomination. Sometimes I get a little, little overwhelmed by the words of praise and support. I'm not used to that. I like working in the trenches and behind the scenes. I usually write for people, speeches, and other things, but, and now it's my turn. So it's, it's a little overwhelming for me. But Madam Chair Babalta, members of the Committee on Executive Appointments and Government Investigations, Senator Magofnia and Senator Manglonia, thank you for giving me the opportunity to testify and for considering my nomination as Associate Judge for the Superior Court. And for this hearing, this is the second time that I will, I will, I have appeared before the committee. And I do appreciate, I restate, I appreciate the attention and diligence that you and the committee have given to my nomination as your committee, and the Senate plays an important role in the confirmation process as set out in the Constitution. I am humbled by the confidence that Governor Palacios and Lieutenant Governor Apetang have placed in me, and I have carefully considered this calling to a new role in government. If confirmed, I know that my life will change professionally and personally. And that sacrifice I'm prepared to make to ensure that my service as an Associate Judge will maintain confidence in the impartiality and fairness of the judicial branch, to uphold the rule of law, and to ensure equal access to justice. I was born, raised, and educated in the Northern Marianas, and I've raised a family here. I have called Saipan my home all my life, as did my parents and generations before them. My parents, Francisco Costoada and Inés Takeda Semenado, were schoolteachers, and they taught me and my siblings important lessons on good citizenship, respect of others, and this work ethic, that there is no substitute for hard work personally and professionally. My father's dedication to public service and my mother's unwavering influence on the importance of constant learning steered us to pursue higher education and, for most of us, careers in public service. As a little girl, I remember my father giving us home lessons on history and civics. He was a voracious reader and loved to gather information and read about the points, point of view of others that were published in the newspaper. When he passed away, my siblings discovered newspaper, newspaper clippings among his documents. And one of them that stood out to me, I think, was a piece written by Jane Mack. I could be wrong, but sorry, Jane, if I attributed you wrongly, but I think you wrote it. And the title of the piece was "The Myth of the Lazy Local Worker." And I suspect that my father kept that article because it debunked the myth that local workers are lazy, and he took umbrage over the often broad characterization of indigenous and native people. He was proud to be Chamorro and also proud to call himself Micronesian. My mother, who was part Japanese, Rafaalosh, and Chamorro, raised us in a way to respect her diverse heritage. My mom taught us the importance of having a curious mind, to explore the wonders of life and the world, and not to be afraid to step out of your comfort zone to do good. Growing up, she managed to gather for us three sets of encyclopedias, including one devoted to, to science. I can assure you that all of us have opened one of those sets at one time or another, and only one, I think, from, thumb through the science books, and I think you know who. My mother would remind us, no matter your gender, you can succeed in anything that you put your mind to. And I pause to remember my mom's lasting lesson to me: Don't forget to thank God for His blessings. The life lessons that I've learned from my parents are the bedrock, really, of who I am. They have nourished me as a daughter, sister, wife, mother, and grandmother, and have guided me through more than twenty-four years of experience as a lawyer. Today, I have all of my six siblings who are here: Mary Lou, Eloise, Esther, Norma, Lucy, and my brother Francisco. Except for one, all have served in public service here in the Commonwealth. My younger sister Lucy has distinguished herself within our family as a senior paralegal for a multi, for a major multinational law firm, and we are all very proud of her accomplishments. As our parents watch from above, I believe that they are pleased that we have come together today to take time out of our, our set time this year to commemorate their memory, especially my mother who passed away a year ago. Last and never least, I know that I am here today because of the unconditional love and encouragement of my husband Ed and our two sons, Christopher and Andre. My husband and I are true partners in our marriage. We mutually respect each other, and I am especially grateful for his support of my desire to embark an illegal career that required me to spend three years off island and two of them with my sons. My eldest son Christopher lives in Oregon. He couldn't be here today. He's with his partner Britta and his two, and their two children, the youngest one born just three weeks ago. He works as a recruiter for the city of Hillsborough. Andre is here. He is a professional engineer in the private sector and lives here in Saipan with his wife Katie, who is present, and their two sons. Logan is my oldest grandchild, and he is here. Stand up, boy. Logan is here at my request to witness democracy at work. Seven years strong, he already possesses views of current events, and I hope that this experience will make a lasting impression on him, on the democratic principles that our Commonwealth is founded on. And I acknowledge I have my Semen Ada Tenorio family friends here, my friends, my former employees, I see former Speaker Lieutenant Governor Diego Beneventi, and I thank each of them for their kind words of praise and assurance. You know, the committee has had the opportunity to look at a detailed description that I submitted of my education, my work history, and my responses to your sixteen-page question here. I won't go through all of that, but this is what I will, this is what I want to draw from that. I have been blessed, blessed to have wonderful teachers, supervisors, influencers throughout my life, and I appreciate your contribution to, to me personally. Present today is my first grade teacher, Chiling Palacios Power. Everyone knows her as the irrepressible Acha Baby, who has been featured, she's a cultural icon, did you not know that? She was featured in promotional videos in Korea. Auntie Chiling taught our first grader, her first graders, how to draw a barracuda with the number five. I will show that later, maybe. She was an engaging storyteller. But what I remember from her most is, was, was a discussion that she led when I was in high school. And she was there to give a talk about, you know, encouraging us as we were nearing the end of our high school years and going off in our separate ways. She asked our class about the people we admired most, and some of us said Mother Teresa of Calcutta and other world-renowned leaders. She said, "Mother Teresa is very admirable," but she reminded us not to forget to look around us, to look within our own experiences and our families and our community, be grateful for, for the sacrifices they have made for you. In my testimony last week, I took you through a summary of one, of what one might describe as a comprehensive legal journey. And it began in this very building, but on the other side. As a legislative legal assistant, where I delved into the intricate workings of the legislative process and developed a keen understanding of crafting and interpreting laws. This foundation and the encouragement of the late Maya Kara to pursue a legal career started me on a journey that continues to unfold to this day. At the University of New Mexico School, School of Law, I was impressed by all of my law professors. They were all great. But three stand out for me at this moment in time. Professor Emeritus James Ellis taught constitutional law courses, I think he still continues to teach, including the constitutional rights class that I attended. Professor Ellis is a tireless advocate for people with mental disabilities in civil and the, and the criminal justice systems. He is recognized as the legal scholar on the rights of the mentally disabled, submitting briefs before the United States Supreme Court, appearing before congressional committees and even state legislative committees throughout the nation, arguing, fighting for the right of people with disabilities and improving access to justice. The late Professor Anne Scales taught tort and contemporary jurisprudence, and I was in both of those classes. And she opened my eyes to examine the law in a different way, not the usual black-letter law. And she opened my eyes to examine the law in a different way, not the usual black-letter law. Her jurisprudence class was a time for me to reflect, to examine my life as a woman of color, living in far-flung territory of the United, of the United States, to look at my own background, my home, my own history, my own ethnicity, and just how this lawyer thing was going to work for me within all of that. Lastly, Professor Emeritus and former Dean Robert De Zedario, a name to, a familiar name to those of you who have attended past pre-law programs, working with the late Justice Ramon Villagomez to respark and reignite the interests here with students and professionals to attend law school. It wasn't the same, you don't have the same number of lawyers that you did back in the 90s as you do now. So, you know, there is, we have a lot to be grateful for, for, especially for Justice Villagomez, his interest in, in moving the, the, the pre-law programs and getting students from here to attend law school. I was a participant, and I am proud to be a part of that legacy. After law school, I came home to a clerkship in the Superior Court and Supreme Court under the, under Justice John Manglonia, where I honed my analytical framework and garnered a deep appreciation for the meticulous application of legal principles to relevant facts. And then I ventured into, back here in the legislature, into the role of legal counsel for the House of Representatives. And I embraced the challenges of navigating the intersection of law and policy. I think that the SAA, Mr. Babalta was kind to say that I was always one of the most friendliest and kind, kind people that he saw walking in the hallway, but I appreciate that. I'm glad that I made that impression on you. Transitioning to private practice, I engaged in a diverse field of, of law, from administrative law to corporate law to family, family law to a whole variety that is usually typically what happens when you are out there in private practice. I collaborated and worked with seasoned litigators, Robert Torres, and mastering the skills of effective representation. This private sector experience provided invaluable insights into the competitive legal landscape here in the Northern Marianas. In 2015, I returned back to private, to public service in my current position as Deputy Attorney General for the Honorable Edward Manny Busan, the first elected Attorney General who is in his third term of office. My principal duty has been to serve as the primary counsel for departments and agencies and to oversee the staff attorneys assigned to each agency. I have dedicated myself to providing sound legal advice to our agency clients with the preparation of legal opinions, opinion letters, and also representing the Commonwealth in assigned litigation matters. This full circle trajectory through the legislature, to the judicial branch and to the executive branch, has not only given me a comprehensive understanding of the law and how that affects each of the responsibilities of checks and balances, separation of powers of the three branches, but it has also instilled in me the versatility and resilience required to serve as a well-rounded legal professional. I look forward to the new challenges presented if I am confirmed as Associate Judge. I understand that the role of a judge is to be a neutral, independent arbiter of cases that are properly brought before the court. Decisions are made impartially, without fear or favor, by evaluating facts, interpreting and applying law. And I will commit to work efficiently and effectively to support and defend the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth, the covenant, the applicable provisions of the Constitution, laws and treaties of the United States. Thank you again for allowing me to testify a second time. And I will, I will give you written comments later.
Señora Tenorio, we will now begin the question and answer portion. And I can begin with foundational questions. And these are required by the Constitution. And they may seem a little odd to you, but it is a constitutional mandate. Mr. Tenorio, are you at least 35 years of age?
Oh, I am, yes. Very much over 35.
Are you a citizen or national of the United States?
I'm a citizen of the United States.
Have you recited in the Commonwealth for at least five years prior to your nomination?
I have.
Have you been convicted of a felony?
No.
Or any crime involving moral perpetuity?
No, I have not.
In any jurisdiction?
No, I have not committed here in the Commonwealth or any other jurisdiction.
Have you been a member of the CNMI bar for at least five years?
More than five years.
Thank you, Ms. Tenorio. Now that we have those constitutional requirements out of the way, what do you feel are the most important buffers or protections I get in our Constitution against the abuse of executive power?
The entire Constitution, right? You have, you have, we are founded on checks and balances system, separation of powers. We all, all three branches have their own respective roles in, in running the business of the Commonwealth. And so those are all, if, if, if each branch observes their respective duties, the legislature is to make law, the executive branch is to implement that law, and if you so delegate to them the authority to promulgate regulations, they will do that. But that's your primary executive function. And then the court is to, to say what the law is, if there's any dispute between the two branches. And also to review any disputes with private parties. Should anything come up and private parties can agree, then they bring those matters to court. But the court is the, is the final interpreter and arbiter of disputes between the two branches.
Thank you. Is there anything in particular in the Constitution that stands out to you with respect to being the bulwarks, the bulwark of the abuse of executive power?
Both the legislative and judicial branch have to perform their functions to serve as an effective check on the executive branch. Those are exercises respective, it provides the process and the procedures for, for making sure that the, there is no abuse.
Thank you. What are your thoughts on get tough laws as a means to deter offenders or repeat offenders? Get tough laws. What are your thoughts on that? Do you agree with it? Do you?
I, you know, I, I have always personal views. And I recognize that I am nominated for a position in which, you know, when you have issues concerning legal interpretation or, you know, your call to, to look at the law, to examine the law and to apply the relevant facts, you do so based on the laws that are in effect at the time of when a matter is brought before you, if I am confirmed to serve as Associate Judge. I will say this, that I have seen where you don't, where there are the lack of discretion that's given to judges. There should be some discretion given to judges. That's just my personal view, to take into account certain circumstances that the legislature could define. But get tough laws, that's really your province. It's really the legislature that gets to decide that. But keep in mind, sometimes there are circumstances in which the discretion of a judge would be important to deciding a case.
Thank you. In line with that, and get tough laws, should there be criminal justice reform legislation here in the legislature? Notwithstanding the CNMI Constitution, do you feel that capital punishment should be applied here in the CNMI?
I don't like to answer that question because you say notwithstanding, and I just said that I will, if confirmed, I will uphold the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth. We do have a prohibition on capital punishment. It's an outright prohibition in our Constitution, and that's what I, all I have to say on the subject.
But if the Constitution were changed?
Then I will address it at that time.
Thank you. What has been your most challenging moment in your legal journey, your legal career? What has been your most challenging moment and how did you overcome that?
There are lots of challenges, there's several. I think I pointed out in the questionnaire that you provided that one of them had to do, I'm not a, one of them had to do with a, with a, with a criminal defense that I was appointed to represent the defendant, and it was a murder, murder charge. And that was particularly difficult for me because I wasn't, you know, handling criminal cases, wasn't, or criminal defense wasn't my line of work as a, as a sole practitioner. But with the help of Robert Torres, who helped me understand the role and appreciate it, I, I took it on. There, we entered into a plea agreement and we had to argue this, the proper sentence. And then, you know, coming up, marshaling the argument in light of the facts that were, that was, in light of the facts that were before me, that was pretty challenging. I mean, this is the, the person that, the defendant that I represented was a poor person and had all the things in life that weren't going against him. And so how do you convince a court that, hey, a lower sentence would be appropriate? That to me was, was, was very challenging. And, and, and I think the court met me halfway, maybe, but, you know, I was pleased with, with that.
What was the outcome of the plea agreement? Did you get what you?
Well, we, we pled out a certain, but not, but we didn't agree, we didn't stipulate to a specific sentence. So you can argue with the court that this is the sentencing that should be imposed. And so we did that. The prosecutor at the time and myself, we, we argued what the appropriate sentence would be.
Was it what you expected?
I, I, I did say that he, I think the court met me halfway.
Okay.
Was less than what the prosecutor had argued, so.
Thank you. I don't have any questions at this time. I'll yield to Senator Corinna Magofnia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Half a day, Tirol, and good morning, Mrs. Tenorio, and to your friends and family who are here in support of your nomination, to the viewing public who are watching online. Ms. Tenorio, it is clear from the testimonies given by all the individuals who came today to show support of your nomination that you possess great qualities that are necessary to fill such an important position as an Associate Judge here in the Commonwealth. As I stated on Tinian last week, your education, your legal experiences and your credentials speaks volume of your qualification for the job. So again, no questions there. The line of questions that I will pose to you is, will be to seek a better understanding of your thought process and how you would evaluate cases in the near future. So I will start off with, can you provide an example of a complex legal issue or case you have handled that demonstrates your ability to apply the law impartially and fairly?
I, you know, I think that question would be probably a person who is a nominee for, for, for an appellate position. Just in my line of work, I can say that the, the coming into the position of Deputy AG and working with the Attorney General to, to defend the, the amendments made to the Constitution to create an independent elected Attorney General. And the argument, the case, the certified question that was presented to the Supreme Court with then-Governor Torres, to me was, was, it was, it was, I felt that the law was pretty, well, not well-settled. You had a lot of law from other jurisdictions, but those, you know, their constitutions were different. But the challenge was to convince the Supreme Court that, that the Attorney General is the chief legal officer of the Commonwealth and he has, he has certain responsibilities and so on. And so that was, you know, there wasn't any precedent from our courts to rely on. And so that was a, a challenging, because you're talking about a constitutional office and making sure these cases have to be, have to be, you know, have to go before the Supreme Court to settle questions. And so that to me was, was a big challenge. And looking at the survey with all the 50 states, I had a terrific chief solicitor working with me. He was a very great, terrific, a terrific researcher who helped pull together all the different constitutions of all the different 50 states and territories and their, you know, the case law that goes behind the interpretation of their respective constitutions. So coming up with, with those arguments and presenting, presenting them to the Supreme Court, to me was a challenge because, you know, this is your office and this is the first time that the Supreme Court will speak on interpreting, you know, the duties and responsibilities of the Attorney General.
Thank you for your answer. My next question is presently, are there any conflicts between the US Constitution and our covenant? If so, what are they? And does that mean that the US Constitution trump our covenant?
You know, when I, towards the end of my testimony, I say the applicable laws, the applicable parts of the US Constitution because the covenant does provide for how, which parts of the Constitution are applicable to the Commonwealth, which laws that they have passed are applicable to the Constitution. So you have to look at the covenant to determine, you know, what those, what those applicable parts of the Constitution and the laws and treaties apply to the Commonwealth. And so you have to go to the covenant as your source of guidance. I can't think off the top of my head what are those conflicts at the moment, but if there is an issue presented about whether or not a, a particular constitutional provision applies here, that's where you go. You look at the covenant. And you look at how that, the tests, the, the standard, how that's set out in terms of, to, to answer that question. There have been issues that have come up, you know, the right to a jury trial, which is different. We had the Davis, Davis case, which looked at, you know, who can vote in matters concerning land alienation. And that was, you know, our, our statute or the restrictions that we were going to place were struck down by the district court. And so those are things that come to mind. So we just have to look at it on a case-by-case basis and take a look at the covenant to determine, you know, whether they conflict, whether this, this part of the Constitution, of the, you know, for instance, I, well, you know, it's a, things are coming into, bing, 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 into mind, but it's the, it's the Interstate Commerce Clause, for instance. Everyone thinks that it applies, but it doesn't. And so what you do when you look at those statutes that are, are, that are invoked under the Commerce Clause, you have to look at what the statute says, and so you apply the test that's provided for under the covenant.
Thank you for your answer. What are your thoughts on the 14th Amendment? Whether it conflicts with our covenant?
The 14th Amendment?
The US Constitution.
Yeah, I understand. The 14th Amendment is a vast, it's complicated. You have your, your process and then you have the individual rights. I am, you know, because that issue might come up, I think that I am going to, you know, other than to acknowledge that there is, there are differences perhaps with, but it's, it's hard to pinpoint what the, you know, give you an answer without really knowing the controversy and the facts. So I'm going to decline saying, to, to, to speak any further on the issue of whether or not. I mean, it, it has been upheld so far. There are provisions of the Constitution that have been upheld so far. Whether a new round of litigation of, for instance, land alienation will, will be upheld. That's, you know, whether our current definition of who can own land here in the Commonwealth will be upheld under the current existing cases that have been decided by the US Supreme Court. That's something that, you know, will need to be looked at.
Thank you for that. And I bring this, I post this question to you because I think it's fair game, right? We could ask whatever questions. There is a Senate, there was a legislative initiative that was introduced by Senator Edith de Long-Guerrero with 2301 with regards to the interest, the accrued interest from NPOD to be diverted and given to the NMDs versus remitting it to the general fund for the government to use as they see fit. the government to use as they see fit. And one of the comments that came, well, there were two concerns that the AG's office provided for that particular initiative, and one of them that it would create a huge financial burden on the government should the initiative be passed. And then the second one was to, the concern was that it could create or challenge me a rise for Fourteenth Amendment because of the people's rights, right? So it's, it's almost discriminatory in nature to, to say that the, that the interest, the accrued interest would only be beneficial for the NMDs and not the people as a whole. So that's the reason why I bring this up.
I understand. And the Attorney General, I believe, signed off on that letter and he has provided comments. And I'm not going to speak any further, other than that, yes.
Okay.
But, you know, there are issues, I think generally when we look at comments that are requested from the legislatures to give you an idea of some of the issues that might come up.
Sure.
And try to provide you background on where this is coming from.
Right.
So it's not intended to be, oh, and this is how, you know.
Right. And, and in some ways, you know, the, everything, almost everything is interconnected. You talk about the, the, was it the Eighteenth Amendment, the voting case, right, where the district court stated that, it was the Davis, is it the Davis case?
It's the Davis case, right.
And so I guess I bring that up because it also, you know, it, it kind of connects to where we could potentially stand in the future, now, understanding now that the voting rights are, are not just for the NMDs here on, here in the CNMI, but also to non-NMDs, U.S. citizens having the right to vote here in the CNMI. And as the population decreases for NMDs, there is, you know, the chance or the potential for more non-NMDs, you know, in population-wise, to be able to put a vote on the referendum to remove Article 11 and 12. I mean, I, I, I'm looking beyond where we are right now and trying to anticipate, you know, some of the potential issues or challenges that may arise in the future that will for sure affect the NMDs. And so I, I guess I was just trying to see where the Fourteenth Amendment could be a huge and critical issue that may arise in the future and how it could completely change the way we think our covenant protects us at this time. So I'm just kind of thinking ahead and trying to see what your thoughts would be should the case ever arise in that manner.
And of course, I'm, I'm sort of not hedging, but I, there are lots of things that are going in my head that you probably, are not going in your head because I'm familiar with the, with the language that's there. Challenges are, you know, that is probably the next matter that would be brought up before the courts as we see a racial discriminate, racial, and in affirmative action cases where racial classifications or the consideration of race in the admission process for colleges and universities have been struck down by the, by the Supreme Court. So I, I'm mindful of that. I just don't want to go any further because that issue may come up and if I am given the, the privilege to serve on the bench, but I, I'm aware of that. I, I do understand and I'm mindful also of the evolving case law that has come down, precedent from the U.S. Supreme Court.
Right.
They touch on that. And I think that's what you're referring to.
Right.
And you've hit it. You're a lawmaker. You understand it. You understand the policy considerations and yes.
Okay.
I understand.
Got it. Just one last question, Madam Chair. In your personal and professional opinion, on a scale of one to 10, how important is the U.S. Constitution Fourth Amendment against unreasonable search and seizure and why is it important in a democracy, democratic society?
Is it one to 10? It's very important and it's not so much the, the Fourth Amendment and what it says in the U.S. Constitution. It's our own, our own Constitution, which gives more rights to, to those who are affected, who's, who have been subjected to unreasonable search and seizures. It provides a private right of action for affected individuals under our, our own Constitution that directly provides for that. So it's important to keep that in mind because we also have a right to privacy as well. So I believe the Supreme Court, our Supreme Court, has said that, you know, you have to keep that in mind when you're applying the law, when you're looking at causes of action against the government for those types of infringements of personal rights. It's important. I, I just want to bring that up, just the difference between what the Fourth Amendment says and what ours Constitution says, which seems to take into account the Bivens cause of action, the federal case back in the seventies, and they've put that into the right against unreasonable search and seizures.
Thank you for your answer, Madam Chair. I yield.
Thank you, Senator Corina. I now offer the floor to Senator Donald Manglona.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning again, Deputy AG, and it's great to have you back. I'm just going to jump right into my questions. And my first one is, how would you address the issue or concern that too many judges recuse themselves from presiding over political matters?
I think what they want to do is safeguard, most importantly, the judicial branch to make sure that when people come before them with disputes, that you have a fair and impartial arbiter of facts. And that is a, is a hallmark, that is something important for, for judges to consider whether they can handle a case or not.
Now, now seeing how all the judges recuse themselves with cases involving the former governor, seeing as how you were appointed by Governor Palacios, if ever there were to be a case against the current governor, would you recuse yourself solely on the fact that he appointed you?
Not on my appointment, but probably looking at the matters, what particular matters a case is based on and whether I've been involved in, in providing legal advice. I mean, that's something that's, that I have to take into account and observe the usual rules of recusal and disqualification that's provided for under statute, there's specific statute dealing with disqualification, and also under the rules, the canons of judicial conduct.
Thank you for that. Now, how will you deal with injustice when you confront it in the courtroom?
Injustice?
Injustice.
I would approach it in the same way that I do, that I would do any issue, taking a look at the law, taking a look at the facts and making a decision based on that. If there is an opportunity to, if I have, if the judge has given a, some discretionary authority over a matter and to redress that injustice, then I would certainly look into it, see if I would have the authority to be able to order something, but that depends on the statute and the law.
Now, do you think it will be helpful to appear, let's say, a public forum to talk about some of the legal processes, whether it be probate or divorce proceedings, just so that the public has a better understanding about the general judicial procedures? Now, I know they have like justices in the classroom and, and programs like that, but I guess something more for the general community.
I think it's important, I think my friend Donna touched on it, of humanizing the courts, improving access, educational opportunities to reach out, public outreach is certainly important. I don't know to what extent they can, you know, there's a controversy currently in the, in the courts, but I think it can generally give a sense of what the procedures are, what the processes are, how you can access as a pro se, the services that are provided for by the court to improve access.
I want to go back to earlier, the chair had mentioned the results of the CNMI bar. There were at least four out of, I think, 33 who completed the survey that opposed your nomination. Would you have any idea as to why that may have been the case?
You know, I'll answer it this way. Those survey forms are filled out anonymously and I respect that. As a member of the bar, I would never want to venture into asking myself why and whatever. I, I've taken note of that, but I don't want to, you know, say anything about what the survey says. It's, it is said and the results are there. And I'm going to respect the anonymity of the process and not comment further.
So if I were to phrase it in a way where, say, do you think there would be anyone who opposes or who would oppose your nomination and if so, why?
I, I, I would leave that person to do what they need, they must do, they can petition their representatives here in the legislature and submit, you know, their reasons. I, I'm not going to speculate and I'm going to observe the anonymous process and I won't comment further. Because that's one of the things, actually, the concerns that other members have raised about, you know, I don't want to turn in my, my, my survey results because of this. And I'm going to honor that because I think it's important for members to know that when they do put in their survey, regardless of how they, how they fill it out, that their anonymity will be respected. And I'm a member of the bar and I respect that.
Thank you. Just one more. How important is it for judges to have trial experience?
Trial experience?
Trial experience.
I think it's important, but you have to look at the individual, individual and their whole entire experience. But it is important to be, to have someone who has been to court. I think it's important to have just different types of experiences. And I've been privileged and blessed to have had that opportunity to be a sole practitioner, to be able to go in and out of court. I may have not had a jury trial, but I've had bench, bench motions, hearings, bench trials. And so it's important to be familiar with, with the court system and how litigation works. But there's also a bigger part of life that's out there in terms of how to help clients access services, how to help them navigate the law, how to prevent lawsuits. And my current position as Deputy AG, that is a big part of what we do is how to minimize risks for the Commonwealth.
Thank you. Thank you for your responses. Oh, seeing as how we have one more hearing, I'll bring up some of the questions on Rota. I yield for now.
Thank you, Senator Manglona. I just have a couple of follow-up questions based on both members who are present today. Piggybacking off of that, how would you address the problems of the delays in decisions by the trial court that we're facing today?
I said in my testimony that I will work effectively and efficiently. I am mindful of the criticism that is leveled with judges and this judicial branch about timely issuing decisions and orders, opinions. But I, and I'm mindful of that. And so I will do my very best if I'm on the bench to, to issue decisions, orders, carry out justice in a timely manner. I'm very mindful of that, of that comment that has been made about the judicial branch.
Thank you. You know, there was a civil case recently that was decided on the, in the courts, the judiciary regarding, you know, one of their decisions came out almost a year after the court, the case was presented to court and it had to do with the civil lawsuit against the JGO. And that slip opinion came out a year after, after the legislature had already dissolved. And that was one of the reasons why I asked that question. But before I ask my last question, I would like to also recognize in the gallery present here today is former Speaker, incumbent member of the House of Representatives, Representative BJ Atto, who is joining us today. Last question, do you think it's time to adopt a jury, a grand jury system for the CNMI or would you continue without one and recognize that the AG has independent inherent investigative subpoena power?
I'm going to leave that issue for the lawmakers of the legislature to set out the parameters and make decisions regarding a grand jury and whatever authority you want to give the Attorney General. Those issues are before you and whatever it is that this, the legislature decides and passes on to the governor, who may sign or not sign whatever law is in effect at that time and that issue comes up, I will follow.
That's all I have for now. Are there any other questions from the members? We tend to cut it short because we already did a hearing for Ms. Lillian Tenorio in Tinian to provide an opportunity for the municipality of Tinian to express their sentiments on Ms. Tenorio's nomination. We are conducting this here in Saipan now, among her support base in Saipan. And also we will be conducting and giving the opportunity to the residents and the community of Rota to provide their sentiments to the committee. I think it's important that we take it across the CNMI. This is a very important position that she has been nominated to and it is a, a duty and responsibility that the EAGI takes very seriously. So I have no further questions. I will recognize Senator Corina Magofnia at this time.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to ask these questions because I recognize that the two, two of the predominant cultures here on the island of Saipan would be the Chamoros and Carolinian is mostly here on Saipan and not so much in Tinian and Rota, so I would like to pose this question. What is your approach to balancing the rights and interests of indigenous Chamoros and Carolinian people at, of, sorry, as protected under Article 12 with other legal considerations and rights under the law?
You know, if I'm, if I'm confirmed, I will observe what is the law with respect to an issue that is brought before me. If Article 12, if it's an Article 12 issue, then I will apply the principles of Article 12 and whatever relevant statute there is and make a decision based on that. I think I want to take issue with you that Tinian does not have a vibrant Rafalawish culture, a great many of them. I was at the library and if you notice, I got up several times because I thought some of the issues were getting a little too intense and maybe an issue that I might be, be dealing with. So I got out and, and I walked around and there is photographs of people, the Untalans, the, even the Hoffschneiders were in, in Yap at very, you know, before, before the war and they came back after the war and resettled back into Tinian. So that I take issue, but, but I didn't mean to, I just wanted to point that out. But yeah, this, that is exactly what I'll do. Whatever issue is there, I will take a look at the applicable law and apply it to the relevant facts.
Great. Thank you so much for your answer. I yield, Madam Chair.
Senator Manglona, do you have any further questions? No, at this time, we have concluded this portion of the hearing. And Ms. Tenorio, you are hereby excused.
Thank you.
Short recess. Short recess. It is now 11:39, and this committee will rise back from recess. And next up on the agenda is miscellaneous. I recognize Senator Donald Manglonia.
Just a reminder to the viewing public and to the members here, since you're also in the FA Committee, tomorrow, the committee meeting will touch base on the House Bill 2395, which is the MPOT line of credit. I did send out a proposed amendment, and so I hope that the members had time to review that. It will be discussed tomorrow. We did get confirmation of Ms. Liz Balajaja under CIP, and trustee chairperson Long will be present tomorrow, and I believe also Secretary of Finance. And so they will be here to answer any questions that the members have. And so I asked that you prepare any questions, and it'll be tomorrow at 1:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Manglonia. Will the tax bills also be addressed tomorrow?
No, the tax bills are, the next meeting will be on Rota. We might do the Saipan hearing sometime next week if we have ample time to prepare. Otherwise, it'll be after the Rota hearing.
Okay. I think in preparation for the public hearing about the tax bills here in Saipan, I think it's important that you contact the Construction Association or Contractors Association, if there are any, as one of the bills there is to increase construction tax. And I think it's important we hear from them as well. Just a recommendation. I thank you for your announcements. Anybody else? No? At this time, we will move right along to the last item on the agenda, which is adjournment. Can I get a motion to adjourn today's meeting?
I move to adjourn today's meeting.
Seconded.
Thank you. Motion has been made and has been seconded. Are there any objections to the motion? There being no objections raised, the motion is duly adopted. This meeting is hereby now in adjournment. It is 11:41 a.m.